All right, welcome everyone to the special meeting of the Glendale City Council being held on January 31st, being called to order at 3:02 PM. Let us have roll call, please.
Council members, as Satrion.
Here.
Brotman.
Here.
Divine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Kasakian.
May we have your, here, may we have your report, please?
Yes, the agenda for the Tuesday, January 31st, 2023, special public meeting of the City Council was posted on Thursday, January 26th, 2023, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. We have three items before us today for consideration. The reason, one of the reasons that we're having these items discussed here in the afternoon is because we do have what we anticipate may be a heavy evening agenda. There may be a lot of items in which the public would like to comment. So we want to spend, have adequate time to address some of these issues, these policy changes that council has discussed, including some ideas that council members have brought forward. Clerk Aba John, can you please read the first item into the record?
Yes, the first item is community development regarding proposed events during National Small Business Week, April 30th through May 6th, 2023. A, motion to note and file. B, motion to direct staff to work with the U.S. Small Business Administration to host events during National Small Business Week. C, resolution to appropriate funding of $49,500. D, resolution to appropriate funding of $90,500. And E, resolution to appropriate funding of $175,000.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian or Ms. Shu Wang?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor Kasakian, Member City Council. As you noted, this item was requested by Councilmember Satrion for staff to prepare a report that will be presented to you shortly for potential events that we, the city, can host in partnership with SBA. And our economic development staff have generated, have come up with three different tiers, depending on the number of events and the extent of these events that council will direct staff to, to move forward with. With that, I'll turn it over to Shu Wang, our Deputy Director of Economic Development in charge of economic development, Deputy Director of Community Development in charge of economic development, for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Good afternoon, Mayor Kasakian and City Councilmembers. Based on council's direction to staff. I'm sorry. Is it working now?
Yeah.
Okay. My apologies.
Go forward.
Okay. All right. I want to take a moment to thank you, Mr. Galanian, for the kind introduction. Good afternoon, Mayor Kasakian and City Councilmembers. Based on council's direction to staff, this item presents an opportunity for us to share more information in terms of a partnership with the Small Business Administration on developing and implementing programming that will provide resources and opportunities for Glendale small businesses during National Small Business Week. I'd like to kick off the presentation just to share a little bit more in terms of who Small Business Administration is. They are also known as the SBA. In 1953, the federal government created the SBA to help build and guide small business owners to ensure that they prosper and grow into sustainable businesses. A decade later, the first National Small Business Week launched to celebrate and honor top entrepreneurs in every state, and since then, it has become an annual event to encourage small business owners to learn from success stories shared, as well as to recognize the contributions of these businesses. Small businesses are pillars of the community and country. According to the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, there are 31 million businesses in the United States, of which 99% are small businesses, and they are the foundational support to every economy. I'd like to also take a moment to highlight the programs and resources that economic development offers to assist with businesses. We can provide customized and confidential site packages to prospects that are considering Glendale as a place to do business. We can also help with existing businesses that are looking to expand here in the city based on its property requirements. We can also produce and share business intelligence and market reports to assist with the decision-making process, especially those that are considering Glendale as a potential home. We also offer business concierge services to help companies navigate and expedite the permitting process. Economic Development can also facilitate resources and incentives to a variety of business partners. And last but not least, we also offer businesses with marketing and social media support to increase awareness of the business and in efforts to encourage residents, as well as visitors, to shop and support our very own local businesses. We also continue to collaborate with a wide array of business partners on hosting a series of seminars on a monthly basis on topics that are relative to business success and growth. In fact, we just launched additional ongoing seminars this month on California labor laws, along with many other business topics underway. We also continue to host our monthly tech seminars featuring successful entrepreneurs and insights that will continue to build momentum as we all work together to build a strong tech and innovation ecosystem in the city of Glendale. So for this year's 70th anniversary of National Small Business Week, which is from April 30th to May 6th, but it's celebrated, quite frankly, for the entire month of May, we have engaged with the SBA on a partnership to co-host a summit that will benefit Glendale small businesses, and they are amenable to this partnership. I do also want to take a moment to acknowledge City Council, and thank you all, including Councilmember Satrion, for introducing us to the SBA leadership in terms of exploring this partnership further. For the summit, we envisioned a panel discussion, a keynote presentation, along with breakout sessions and networking opportunities that will support and bring to light resources that will help our small business community. And to continue to generate momentum and recognition and celebration of Small Business Week, Economic Development is looking to align the schedule with our May tech seminar to share ideas on tech and innovation, along with resources to help entrepreneurs, startups, and innovators during this week-long celebration of small businesses. The networking component of the event could include table setups from a wide array of business partners, where attendees can meet, make connections, ask questions about certification programs, and quite frankly, any business program. Some of the priority topics could include benefits and advantages of being certified as a small business owner, with a focus on female and minority-owned businesses, along with government procurement opportunities. There are some potential venues that we are vetting at this point, where there could be some cost savings if the summit is being held at a city-owned venue. So there are some cost savings in that regard. For example, Central Library could be a location if council decides to direct staff to move forward. But other locations of consideration that may provide additional capacity, depending on programming and depending on direction from council, are the Hilton, the Glenmark, things of that nature. So there are several exciting objectives in terms of putting on the summit. First, the goal is, we want to convene partners and resources that will help businesses thrive and prosper in the city of Glendale. Another objective is to bring awareness in terms of the advantages of being certified as a small business by the SBA. And again, we want to put an emphasis in terms of supporting and assistant, or assisting, excuse me, women and minority-owned business opportunities. We intend to implement programming that is the best use of time for business owners and content that will resonate and benefit the small business community in meaningful ways. We understand that many small business owners don't necessarily have a lot of time, and so our goal is to produce quality and engaging content in the most time-efficient manner. And last but not least, we believe it is important to celebrate and honor the success of our small businesses in Glendale, who are vital to our growing economy. So in the spirit of collaboration, we have a preliminary list of anticipated partners, both internal and external, but it's not limited to just the partners that are listed on this slide. We love to hear from council if there are any partners that we should collaborate with. Please let us know. Every entity that participates would bring value to the conversation and provide resources that would truly help our small businesses. So Economic Development, we did not factor hosting any large events during National Small Business Week, especially in this current budget. Therefore, funding would need to be appropriated if council decides to direct staff to move forward with this endeavor. We do have a few tiers of consideration. For tier one, we are estimating, and again, these are rough estimates, of approximately 49,500 to launch either a half-day or all-day event. This does take into consideration if the summit is being held at a city-owned venue, so there are some cost savings in this particular tier. For tier two, we are anticipating a cost of 90,500, which would include renting a hotel venue and meeting space for breakout sessions and networking, aggressively marketing the event, and paid and digital advertising, and so on. And for tier three, we are anticipating a rough estimate of approximately $175,000, but this does take into consideration multiple days of various keynote and breakout sessions and, and whatnot. I also want to point out that this does not take into consideration any sponsorship dollars that would help offset city costs. It may be best to start on a smaller scale, then that way we can build momentum and partnerships to get it to the caliber of Glendale Tech Week, in order to secure sponsorships that are needed to mitigate costs for the city. As this will be our very first large small business summit, we are seeking direction from council in terms of what would be the appropriate level of investment and effort from, from staff. So with that, that concludes my presentation, our presentation. Our Community Development Director, Mr. Bradley Calvert, and I are happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Who among my colleagues would like to make comments or ask questions, and we do have a caller on this item?
I have one question.
Councilmember Divine.
In the, the monthly business seminars that you are currently holding, what's the attendance like in those seminars? I'd like a number, if you can give me a number of attendees.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Councilmember Divine, that's a really great question. I do have specific numbers for the California labor laws. It was pretty popular. We had nearly 50 people register. We anticipate that numbers will continue to increase. We did get a lot of positive feedback, even folks dialing in and participating from out of state, asking if we would be able to partner and do something of that nature. I believe it was State of Delaware, I, I can't recall what state in particular, but so far it's been positive feedback.
Are these on Zoom? Is that?
Yes, it's on, actually Teams.
Oh, I see. Oh, I see. I thought it was, they're not local then. I mean, they're not just local seminars.
It's, it's actually available virtually, and so attendees would call in or join virtually from wherever their place of, of location, and so.
So you can't give me a number of how many Glendale small businesses attend?
We, we can look into that and get you that specific number.
I think that would give me, give me, anyway, an idea of what kind of attendance and interest there would be in this. And my second question is, the goals that you have, the objectives, if we choose one day, do you think you can meet all of these goals in one day with different sections and workshops and?
Councilmember Divine, absolutely, because this is not a standalone summit. We will still continue to host a variety of, even if it's in-person seminars and events, especially getting feedback from attendees if they have an interest to, perhaps there's other topics that we may not have been able to incorporate as part of programming, we would certainly love to follow up and do any type of, even if it's one-on-one conversations and bring the right resources to the table, but absolutely.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Anyone else with any questions? Yes, Councilmember Brotman.
Just a couple of questions. I'm looking at the slide number eight, fiscal impact, and I see your tier one has 5,000 that you're putting to marketing, towards marketing, and the, and tier two has 25,000. Can you talk about what would, what you would do with those amounts of money?
Mr. Mayor, council members, Councilmember Brotman, I'm looking at the slide right now, so if I'm understanding your question, and, and please let me know, you're wanting to know the breakdown in terms of the event management services, what, what that cost would entail?
No, no, I, I mean, what, what are you able to do with $5,000? What do you anticipate doing with $5,000?
For marketing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And what do you anticipate doing for $25,000?
Yes, absolutely. So for the marketing for tier one, we would utilize our traditional platforms, right? So whether it's releasing a press release, working with different partners to promote the program, for the most part, and there will be some promo items that we will purchase. For tier two, the reason why it's a lot, in terms of the disparity from 25,000 to 5,000 is, we are thinking about leaning on paid advertising. And so to, to give you an example, like the Los Angeles Business Journal, depending on, you know, if we want front cover, the cost can be pretty substantial, too. It can be anywhere from 5,000 to 10,000, just for one advertisement. So we still need to sit down as a team, once council gives staff direction, and really solidify which advertisement or media outlets would give us the greatest return on investment. And so right now, the 25,000 is just really taking into consideration one or two of those, more of the industry associations, I, I like to call it, but we, we haven't nailed down anything.
Okay. And, and do you have, between tier one and tier two, I mean, it's the same, it would be the same kind of program, so the difference would be you're spending more money on advertising, presumably to get, you know, more participation. So do you have a sense of like, what kind of participation levels you can expect under each of these tiers?
It's, it's difficult, Councilmember Brotman, to, to really determine what type of attendance or what type of attendees would attend, but I do also want to call out, tier two, another cost difference is really renting a hotel venue. So if you look at tier one, there's no cost, because that's, you know, taking again into consideration if we were to say host this at Central Library, perhaps, in, in the auditorium, which is a, a nice setup as well. Tier two, venue rental, we did get an estimate number, we're looking at about 21,000. And so there is a little bit more spacing that would allow for us, let's say, if we were to do any kind of breakout session, so there is more capacity in that regard. But it really depends on if, if council directs us to move forward renting a hotel venue to host this summit, or if we can just start small and kind of build upon that momentum and generate interest from other folks outside of the area, maybe it's small businesses that are looking to invest in Glendale, perhaps that might be of interest to them to attend.
So basically what you're saying is, I understand tier two has those two differences. You're doing more marketing, you're in a, maybe you're in a bigger space? So, so you're saying that if, if we were to, let's say, do it at the library, or you mentioned GCC, or you have it written down here, GCC, like if we were to do it in a place like that, which didn't, you know, cost us anything for the venue, then you would kind of limit the marketing? I mean, you wouldn't, you wouldn't do a, a full, full court press because we wouldn't have the capacity? Is that what you're saying?
Councilmember Brotman, with additional marketing efforts in tier two, we expect we would get more attendees. But with tier one, because there's a little bit of some limitation there, I mean, we can still leverage partnerships, you get the word out, social media, Chamber of Commerce here, right, with, with Glendale Chamber of Commerce, even our Montrose Chamber of Commerce, the Valley Economic Alliance, I mean, there's many different partners that we can lean on to get the word out. But tier two, we just feel that if we do invest dollars into any kind of paid or digital advertising, that would amplify awareness of the summit and should hopefully get more attendees to register and attend.
Okay. I mean, my thought would be, you know, if we can walk before we run, you know, do something a little bit more modest, save some money, use our own space, but definitely, we want to do whatever marketing we need to fill the room, right? We, we want a good turnout. So I don't know if that's something that you would have to tell us, what, what you think you need to do if, if some paid advertising makes sense. I mean, we really want to, right, we want to do it right, and we want to fill up the room and get good attendance. And the other question I just had is, is just to think about is, you know, how we're going to measure success? Obviously, attendance is one thing, but we should be thinking about, especially if we want to start doing this year after year, like, how are we gonna, how are we gonna measure our success over time?
Mr. Mayor, council members, and Councilmember Brotman, that's a really good point, and part of the reason why we are really striving to elevate our efforts is because of our three-year economic development strategic plan. So as you may recall, we do have a element in there that really touches on what are we doing to help support small businesses and minority-owned companies here? And so we feel that by providing this, this platform, this summit, where we're convening and bringing different business partners together and make them aware of how we can be a business resource and a partner, we feel that we can measure and, and really lean on the metrics in terms of how many business part, or I'm sorry, how many businesses have we been able to assist in those categories? We do have, you know, in terms of what you will be seeing, you may be a little bit more familiar with it in terms of the great visits, but really the business retention surveys, right, to really get out there and get their perspective in terms of what topics, what are the challenges that they are facing, so that we can pivot and develop programming to help assist.
Okay, thanks.
Who would like to comment or ask questions? Councilmember Al Sethrian?
I have comments. Maybe we take the call.
Okay, let's take the call, well, Councilmember Najarian, do you have any questions?
I, I just have some general insightful comments, a little bit.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Insightful, insightful.
Yes. It's the afternoon session, that's how we roll.
City Manager Galanian?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, actually, there's a point of clarification that Mr. Calvert is going to make regarding the recommendation in the staff report that refers to tier two, but the intention was to any combination of the above, so I'd like him to make that clarification before we move forward.
Correct, thank you, and good afternoon, Mayor and council members. These tiers are really meant to be a guide. You can mix and match these however you want. If you want to go with tier one and also use an outside space, that obviously would change the cost, but if there are certain pieces to this that you would like to recommend, going back to Councilmember Brotman's comments there, in terms of if we want to beef up that marketing, we can certainly do that. So these tiers are not meant to be stringent in that regard, so we, we do request, if you would like to mix and match that, please do.
All right, thank you, noted. Clerk Aba John, may we go to the calls? Can you put the first caller through?
Yes, our first caller is Ben Raju with the U.S. Small Business Administration. Ben, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Hey, I'm just over here, and it's been exciting to get a chance to hear and listen all of the wonderful thoughtfulness that's going into the small business community, as well as the resources available to Glendale small businesses. SBA helped Glendale home for many years, and it's exciting to get a chance to see the continued efforts for the small businesses in the area. And as you guys explore the option of being able to provide this type of resource to the small businesses, SBA is excited to exploit the opportunity of partnering with you guys to move forward with the resources and providing, whether it has to do with the capital, whether it has to do with contracting, international trade, being able to be there to be able to support with those types of resources as you may need them. So with that, I'll yield the rest of the time. If there's any questions, happy to take them online.
Thank you, Mr. Raju.
Our next caller is Herbert Milano. Herbert, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Mayor Kasakian members of the City Council. I want to speak to this topic here as much as I started my business in computer systems in Glendale in many years, this is my home of my headquarters. But also during this year.
Mr. Milano, it's not, we can't hear you clearly, can you maybe hold the phone a little further away, or try something where we can hear what you're saying?
Thank you, let me try again. Is this better?
Yes.
Okay. The, I want to say that during many years, when I started my business, I started in the city of Glendale, and I expanded from Glendale to other parts of the country, but I used the services of the Chamber of Commerce as a number, and also I used the SBA during that period of time for assistance in consulting and framing the objectives of the business. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Councilmember Brotman brought up the key question that I had, is what are the measurable objectives that you have that are clear and definitive, so you can say what year from now these objectives were met? This program sounds to be a bit vague to me right now, just given the information that was given, and, and I'd like to see a, a program that truly out there identifies the problems that, that current businesses have. If there is a shortage of employees, or a shortage of outreach, maybe the type of length that there is with the bigger job center might be one. How many businesses are established in Glendale? How many close out, and for what reasons? The, the gathering of relevant data, and what other industries are being considered for inclusion, you know? I mean, as a, as a small property owner and owner of an apartment building, is, am I included? Do I feel like a victim more than I, than a business person here in Glendale, right? The, is the city providing the services that I truly need, you know, to attract the big kind of people that I want for my, for my residences? The, if there is going to be any type of collection of data, I would like to see ideally that every year, the city, the city council takes time to review that data and create policy on the findings. But meetings, get to feel good meetings, gathering brochures, putting it in folders, take it to the office, and then nothing really happens afterwards? I've seen too many of those. And maybe this is the time to look at things a little bit differently, make it truly, you know, with KPIs and clear objectives and, and data that will allow the city council to evaluate how businesses are really doing in Glendale. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Those were our callers. Councilmember Al Sethrian, would you like to make your comments?
Sure. So first and foremost, thank you to staff for putting together the report and for working on this and all that you do to help our small businesses. When I first recommended this, my thought was that, you know, many of our local small businesses heard of the SBA for the very first time during COVID, because they were the ones that were providing those emergency relief funds and the small percentage in loans that would help them get through COVID. But what the SBA has is much more than that. They have a lot of financial lending opportunities that they can provide to our small businesses, as well as helping them get certified as a minority and woman-owned business, which is actually needed for a lot of the federal contracting that comes in. is actually needed for a lot of the federal contracting that comes in. I've also thought about the fact that the L.A. Olympics are right around the corner, and I want to make sure that our businesses in Glendale are able to get the contracting as they move in. I want to see Ramp L.A. as part of this initiative, for them to also come in, because they're going to be contracting anything from food and flowers to, you name it. And I want to make sure that our small businesses in Glendale are the ones that are benefiting from that. When we think about marketing, my kind of vision for the marketing end would be that it's not our typical, you know, we put out an ad in paper, or contacted our list. But I think some of the most vulnerable small businesses that we have in our city, and the small business owners have language barriers. So I would love to see a marketing effort that includes placing ads in various, you know, Hispanic, Armenian, Asian newspapers, and TV, TV ads. I know that IFO One can definitely help, not only connect, but also work out a deal where it's beneficial to our city to do that. But these are the ways that we would be able to get that larger demographic into the room that I think tend to be missing when we do events. I do want to note that, you know, based off of our meeting with the SBA, I had the opportunity, so the head of the SBA, who's the Biden appointee, used to be the head of BizFed in California, and had the opportunity to work with her then. I've seen her at an event in L.A. a couple of months ago. I did tell her that this was something that was coming, and I would love for her to come be the keynote if we do move forward with this. She was very open to it, and one of the things that we also learned during our meeting was that the national SBA is right now planning their national tour for National Small Business Week. So I've been waiting for today for me to circle back with Administrator Guzman, to both talk to her about, and confirm for her to come and be the keynote, which I think would be a big draw from neighboring cities, but also for them to consider Glendale as one of their stopping cities. They were saying things like, you know, some of the big things that they're doing is not just for the small businesses, but also like putting together like a J-Lo concert and whatnot. They're putting in a lot of money. It's their 70th anniversary, and I want us to be considered for all of that. So my, you know, I'm also committed to getting sponsors. I know that there are plenty of opportunities that we haven't tapped into that could help with this, but I would love to see a larger marketing budget in this, and I want to hear what my colleagues have to say, and the insights, Mr. Najarian.
Councilmember Najarian?
I think this is a good idea. As someone who advises small businesses in my day job as an attorney, I think there's a lot of information that is directly valuable to our small businesses. You could spend a day or more on legal issues, on formation, legal formation, legal dissolution, legal operation, taxation issues, accounting issues, insurance issues, social media marketing, HR practices. These are things that, kind of regardless of what your actual business is, whether you're a service provider, or a small manufacturer, that are going to be really critical and valuable to you as a business owner. I don't think it would cost anything. We have, we have experts in our community. The Glendale Bar Association has attorneys that are well-versed in these issues. We've got a vibrant accounting industry in Glendale where we can bring people in. And so I see value to it. I think that's, that will be the value, in bringing really tangible information that is usable by these businesses in their formation, operation, success, in some cases, termination. Maybe they want to get funding opportunities, you know, venture capital, seeking venture capital, whatever it may be. A lot of very exciting issues around that, that a startup business, or even an existing business, I think would like to hear about. So I don't think you're going to have a problem creating an agenda of very good issues. The only question I think that we're seeing here is, how big do we want to start? I would generally prefer that we start a little smaller, and have an overflow room for Year One, and then tout it, you know, as a huge success, and then expand it as years go on, rather than having a big empty, I mean, the alternative is having a large space that isn't as filled. And, you know, there's nothing like having a standing-room-only crowd, even in a small room, to generate excitement about a particular program. So I think it's a great idea. I would just sort of default to a smaller startup, and fine-tune it as we go forward, hopefully as an annual, as an annual event. And I think there's a lot, a lot we can do. How do you deal with a city? How do you get a permit? How do you, how do you deal with planning? A great planning department. How do, you know, all sorts of things. Homeless, how do you deal with a homeless person that camps in front of you? Who are the agents? I mean, there's just a ton of issues that are very, I think, pertinent and very important for businesses. And I think if we fill that need as perhaps part, I'm sure there's larger national issues, there's disadvantaged business enterprises, small business enterprises, certification, all those other things. But I think, you know, locally, you could really provide some great content that I think will make this an annual success. Thank you.
All right. Everyone, anyone else like to comment?
I'm fine with commenting. No, I too think that this will be a good, a good program, a good event. I too feel, you know, our economic development department did such a great job with Tech Week. We started small, and now it's, it's just blossomed. And I'd like to see something like that happen with Small Business Week. As has been mentioned, there's a lot of content that would be very valuable, I think, to small businesses here in Glendale and outside of Glendale. I think all of us want to see our small businesses prosper and grow. There's no denying that. And I think as long as you can get the objectives done, and answer some of these important questions that have been brought up today, and, or content that's been brought up today, I think that going with the Tier One would be the way to go for our first, our first attempt at this. Start small and let it grow. And as you said, you know, let's, let's make it a quality event, but efficient, and not, you know, not waste time or money. Let's just really make it a, an important event.
I would just say, I mean, I agree on kind of going, starting modest. But I, but I would like to maybe go beyond our standard methodology for getting the word out, because we, like, like we're saying, we want a packed room, right? We want it to look really, we want to get bang for the buck. So I would suggest, you know, I would also suggest, you know, something like a one-day thing, not a multiple-day thing, but maybe doing a little bit more of, of the advertising that we need to bring in, you know, the range of different types of businesses that we want. So that's, that's all I would say. I do like the idea, especially hearing Councilmember Najarian talking about all the different subjects. That's a lot, you know, you can't cover all that stuff. So the idea of breakouts is appealing, and I don't know if we, you know, if we can pull that off in the library. I mean, we have that one good room. I don't think we have other rooms that are, I don't know, you tell me if, if there is a way we could do breakouts, because there could be kind of a very specific topic, business dissolution, or something like that, and like, there's certain people that are really interested in that, and they'll go, and you have a conversation that's a lot more intimate and informative. So if we could try to split the baby somehow, and I don't know if that space works, maybe GCC is better for that, because they, they would have a lot of different rooms, obviously, if they're willing. But that's, that would be my two cents.
Okay.
Could I make a recommendation?
Sure.
Okay. So I think it would be worthwhile for us to consider somewhere between Tier One and Tier Two. I would love to see the marketing dollars assigned to it to be larger. I think as it comes to the details of the event, whether it's one day, or three days, or maybe we're doing a couple of networking events throughout the week, to kind of leave that to staff, to figure out, you know, if we do end up getting sponsorships, which I would personally work on, I would love to engage our, some of our small businesses for them to be the ones to host networking events, so that we're not doing the legwork, but there, there are also opportunities for them to get to know each other and network, not just with our staff, but also have connections within the SBA. And Councilmember Najarian, I think a lot of the items that you mentioned are also the resources that the SBA talked to us about, and said that they would be willing to help bring in the experts on these things. So I think there's a lot here, and as long as we agree on moving forward with this, and maybe we just do something between the two tiers, and then let the staff decide how they move forward with the details, that would be okay.
All right. Well, anyone want to respond? All right. So let me just express my thoughts on this. I think that a lot of good points were made about our businesses coming through COVID, and a lot of them getting a rapid self-introduction and education to what the SBA does. Obviously, we've discussed, I've certainly voiced my desire to have our city staff work more closely with a lot of the businesses that perhaps had difficulty navigating the waters of COVID, and the government programs that were here to assist them. And this council has done its fair share of providing help to our local businesses, but that doesn't mean that we can't do more. I personally believe that Glendale should have a culture, and we should try and foster one, where every week is Small Business Week in this city. Small business is a kind of misnomer, because it means any, any business that makes anywhere between, I think, $1 million to $40 million in revenue a year, and has anywhere between 100 to 1,500 employees, is considered a small business, which really accounts for a large chunk of businesses in our city and in most cities, right? It's kind of, the small business is the backbone of the U.S. economy, as was referenced. But we do need to, I think, step forward and lean into letting our small businesses know that they have a support network built in, both within the city and through the SBA, which, by the way, used to be headquartered in Glendale. And I haven't given up on Mr. Raju and his successor to try and bring him back to Glendale as a headquarters. I think that, I agree in terms of starting off smaller, only because we have a lot of budgetary demands that we're going to be visiting. And I think every time, every week on this council, when there's new ideas that come up, new issues, new concerns, you can hear the dollars, just, you know, you hear that register going with kind of our requests. So I think that to start off smaller, with a hybrid of, starting off with perhaps the first tier with a increase in advertising, because I know that when we did the joint SBA event back in December with the California Armenian Legislative Caucus, we were the host of that here. I'll be honest with you, I think that the Legislative Caucus's materials and outreach and advertising really kind of fell short of what we could have possibly had. I think we may have had anywhere between 35 to 50 people there, but I know that, given the questions that we get asked as councilmembers, that you get asked as staff, had we done our own advertising, and perhaps come up with more attractive and eye-catching material, we would have probably had double that number. So that's where I stand on this. And I am grateful that staff has embraced this idea, and is willing to go forward with it. So with that, if someone wants to make a suggestion or a motion, we can move forward. Councilmember Divine?
I have two. First of all, you asked for suggestions for sponsors, or those that collaborate. Don't forget the Greater Downtown Business Association. I don't see them on this, on this page. I don't think I do. But I think they need to be involved. And I would suggest maybe adding $5,000 to the marketing, and that would bring the marketing up to $10,000. That would give us a little bit more, or give staff a little bit more funding to work with.
If I may, Councilmember Divine? So we kind of kept it general, and we have it listed as business improvement districts to incorporate both Greater Downtown and Montrose, and Kenneth Village, and whatnot.
Okay. Great. So that, those are my, that's my suggestion.
Okay. Anyone want to set forth a resolution appropriating funding, or an action that we could all possibly move forward on, besides, or a motion to direct staff, besides what is listed here?
For the Councilmember-
Councilmember Al Sathrian, would you like to bring this up?
Has everybody said on the 10, or are we looking at the, possibly doing the 25 for the marketing?
I think we all, there's consensus that we would like more marketing.
Right.
But we can also direct staff to do more marketing, and/or we can give a specific figure. I would defer that to staff. But, you know, we, we can entertain any resolution you would like to put forth.
Mr. Mayor, one option, one alternative would be up to a certain amount.
Sure.
Not necessarily we will spend the entire amount, but depending on the level of marketing that staff will engage in, you can provide that kind of direction.
All right. Councilmember Al Sathrian, would you like to make a suggestion?
Would we be comfortable with doing up to 70?
Or, I'm sorry?
So that would be the, a little less than 25? And then you would get rid of the venue for Tier Two?
I'd be willing, I'd be willing to do 60,000. I think with 10,000 for marketing, we could up that, and just make the total amount there up to 60,000 for Tier One. I mean, we agreed, we wanted-
Put it to 15,000 for marketing if we went up.
Yeah.
About 15,000 for marketing.
Yeah, okay. That's, you know, if we do it in the, in the library, or somewhere like that, and we have one room, I mean, and with all of these connections that you're going to be contacting about this event, you know, we don't want to have 5,000 people there either, right? So I would think that doing it in different languages, and getting it out there with 15,000, I think that would be-
Yeah, let's pump that up to 15,000.
So that would be like 65 altogether?
Or 60, yeah, close to 60, or a little over.
50 is with 5,000 markets. If we want to add 10,000 in marketing-
54, 60.
Oh, 60, 60, sorry.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Did my math right?
Okay. Councilmember Al Sathrian?
Wait a minute. Are you a numbers guy?
I'll move to appropriate up to $60,000 in funding for us to start our annual Small Business Week.
Second.
Okay. So a motion to direct staff to move forward with the U.S. Small Business Administration hosted events for National Small Business Week, with a cap of $60,000 for you to be creative with. If you do manage to secure Glendale as a site for the J-Lo concert, we can revisit this issue and increase that budget. And we have, roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor, just so we're clear, that would be Item 1B, and then a separate resolution for Item 1C would be resolution appropriation of $60,000.
Would you like to amend that to combine your motion with the resolution, Councilmember Al Sathrian? And is there agreement on the second? Let us have a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Al Sathrian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian?
Yes. May we have the second item right into the record, please?
Yes, the second item is from the city attorney's office regarding discussion of reestablishment of interview panel system for recruitment and selection of members of boards and commissions. Term limits for boards and- of boards and commissions. Term limits for boards and commissions. A, motion directing staff regarding reestablishment of interview panel system for recruitment and selection of members of boards and commission. Timing for implementation of system and term limits for members of boards and commissions.
All right. Mr. Galanian?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, your council has had previously conversations and discussions about this item, and I'm simply going to turn it over to our City Attorney, Mike Garcia, to present on different options available and seek direction from council as to the next steps.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Mr. Mayor, members of council, in November, the council had a discussion regarding the process for the boards and commissions, the nomination process, and asked us to bring back information related to the panel system and kind of how it would work, and then also to get some council feedback and direction on, on the timing of implementing such a system, if the council will move forward with it. So again, the panel system is, is established by, on the left column, starting with the council members in alphabetical order, and then in the right column, going next in line alphabetically. And then we would go through each panel and for a particular commission or a particular vacancy. And then once we go through this, these five panels, then we would go, we start over again, start with Councilmember Divine on the right, and then we do that, we would do that four times and then go back. So that's basically how the rotation works under the old system. And, and we would recommend if that's, that's where the council wants to go with it, that you utilize that method. It did, it did work, you know, as seamlessly as possible. The mayor was the clerk at the time, so you can certainly recall. Sometimes there was issues with it, but it worked better. There was previous iterations where it was a more random system and this, this ensured that to the maximum extent feasible, there were not multiple council members having repeat opportunities on a particular commissioner panel. So, and this is more of a Chuck least than, than a, than a slide deck. I, I just wanted to kind of go through some of the issues where we would need direction. And again, the, as proposed or as it was previously done, the, for a particular board or commission, if there was one or two vacancies on it, then that, that panel that's selected for that board or commission would be the panel responsible for nominating board members or commissioners. If it was, if there were multiple vac, if there was a majority of the board or commission that was vacant or was coming upon vacancy, meaning their terms were expiring, then we'd take a council action to assign a panel to nominate a majority of those members. And I think that was, the policy call at the time was if council should be involved in that decision to decide whether or not a particular panel is going to be making the nominations for majority. Again, that's, if you want to maintain that, would like to get some direction on that as well. And then, of course, a panel is assigned to a particular commission and not more than one commission at a time. So with respect to the, the process, when a, when a vacancy is, when there is a vacancy or when there's a vacancy that's going to be pending because a, a term is ending, then at that point, the panel is assigned, the panel is notated on the agenda, and then that point forward, there's at least a minimum two-week filing period. There's advertisements that are, that are conducted in various media to gain interest, as well as I'm sure individual council members can identify individuals for potential application. So with that, the, the recommendation is again, to have that filing period open for a minimum of two weeks, and then that panel will be authorized to extend it if there are no applicants or if there's a minimum number of applicants and the panel wants to see more applicants before they make a decision to interview candidates. With respect to the applicability, previously, it applied to all boards and commissions, including the Airport Authority. We are recommending, because there are council members on, on the Airport Authority, to exclude the Airport Authority from, from that process, and, but continue to have it to apply to all of the boards and commissions established under Title II of our municipal code, as well as the Civil Service Commission. From time to time in this process, previously when we had the panels, the, there were times where the panel could not agree on a process, on, on a candidate or, or candidates. And the policy calls for the, the two panels to attempt to try to resolve their dispute, maybe look at other, other candidates, or try to continue to, to discuss the matter. But then ultimately, the, the item comes back to the council. Oddly, the, the, what would typically happen if, if, kind of like the hung jury, if, if they couldn't come back, then the judge calls a, calls a mistrial and you go forward and you call a new panel. There's nothing specific in the procedures that says the council will then at that point appoint a new panel, but I would recommend that that be in there. The council will have the discussion of whether or not the panel can resolve the issue. If not, then the council will be authorized to, to appoint a new panel. And again, the council's not appointing the panel, it's being appointed pursuant to the procedure. So with respect to the panel system itself, what the council did ask for at the prior meeting was some options on, on how to implement. The time, the last time when we went from the panel system to the individual nominating system, we, the council essentially removed, for lack of a better term, all the board members and commissioners, subject to their reappointment or replacement. So that's certainly an option. I, I did note in the report that, you know, it's been relatively new since some of the council members have, have nominated board members or commissioners since the 2022 election. And so there, there would be some likelihood of some turnover based on who some of those commissioners are. But again, it's, it's going to be up to the individual panels on who they nominate. So that's one option. Another option is to leave the current system in place, and then after the 2024 election, to implement the system that at least allows the council members that were elected in 2022, who hadn't completed all their nominations, to have that opportunity to do so. And then we would, we would start that process, that panel process in 2024. One, one caveat to that, I would recommend, if the council were inclined to go with that direction, is to consider maybe with the Civil Service Commission, to go with the, go with the nominating panel system immediately since we have a vacancy and we have another commissioner's term that was expired. And I think, I don't think any of the council members, other than the Councilmember Najarian, has had an opportunity to, to nominate someone on the board and commission. I think Councilmember Divine, but, so that's, that's an option I would suggest you consider. And then the other option...
I just have one. It's not like I nominate.
Oh, right, right. No, yeah, exactly.
The whole group.
Yeah. And, and given the fact that there was, there was some question of how to, how to implement that, that single nominating system when the, the Civil Service Commissioners don't follow the terms of the council members. So that would, that would be, if the council's concerned about that fairness aspect, you could certainly institute that process now for civil service. And then the third option was presented was sort of make, make the nominations, use the panels through attrition. So as a vacancy comes up, if they're current, for the current vacancies, and as a current vacancy comes up, whether somebody resigns or is removed, or someone, a council member, his term is over, then at that point, you would institute the, the panel nomination for that system. Obviously, that results in some... Councilmember Divine?
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but let's say there are more than one, like on the Civil Service Commission, though, or two, that might be. Will it be the same panel for both, or a different panel for each?
Well, the way it worked under prior policy, it would be the same panel for both. So, but I would, I would be seeking council direction on if you want to follow that process, or you want to have a panel for each vacancy. It's, it's really up to the council. I think part of the, the benefit of having the panel interview multiple candidates is they are seeing all, all the candidates at the same time, they're making the assessment, and it, for efficiency reasons, it's probably a little bit easier to do one panel per however many vacancies you have, but certainly a policy call for the council.
Yeah. But, but even if it's like two different commissions, all of a sudden they come up, like there's a vacancy on parks and there's a vacancy on design review, would that same panel decide on both, or?
No, that would be a different panel.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that would be a separate panel.
For each one. Okay, thank you.
Correct. A separate panel for each, for each commission. Correct. So anyway, so that's, that's certainly an option available to you to do it through attrition. Again, as we noted in the report, then you would have some board and commission members that were nominated by an individual council member, and some that were nominated by, by panel, and you all will have to decide whether or not you think that's a, that's a fair approach or not. With respect to the terms, currently, the code establishes their terms as being at the same term as the council member that nominated them. If you're going to get rid of that system, then the code needs amended just to save four years. And then their, their, their term goes until the successor is appointed. So they serve four years, and then they, they get replaced at the time that they're, they serve at least four years, and then they get, their term ends when actually their successor is appointed by the council. And then the issue of the term limits, we still have it in the code. The, the thought, I think, of the council was that some of these issues will be addressed through changing the process, but you still have some board members and commissioners who have hit that third aggregate term. And so the policy call is still before you, whether you want to eliminate that or reduce it back to two terms with per commission, or three terms per commission, or, and you can actually combine this with some of the options, put back into the code, the process that would allow, and this is where we started this discussion, I think, Councilmember Brotman asked for it, was reinstitute the provision that allowed the council to override the term limit if it found that it was in the best interest of the city to do so. That's, that was always an option to you, but we removed that from the code a couple of years ago. And then if we are going to return to the panel system, it would be our recommendation to institute a policy for addressing issues of complaints, whether it's somebody not attending or being prepared, or some sort of misconduct, that there be some, some form of process. I, I put the prior process in, in the staff report, I think as a good framework to use going forward, if that's what the council wants to do. It obviously involves, if we get a written complaint or a verbal complaint, sometimes it's very simple to handle. If, just like misconduct occurred at a meeting, that's very simple to, to witness. And so then at that point, the process can, can be implemented, ultimately resolving, if, before removal, would resolve in a, result in potentially a meeting involving two council members, usually the mayor and a council member appointed by the mayor, as well as the city manager, to meet with a particular board member or commissioner, if it's something that the, that panel wants to do, rather than just bringing a potential removal action to, to the full city council. So those are kind of the points that I wanted to provide to you on what would, the things that we need to do if the council wants to reinstitute the, the panel system, get some direction. Obviously, I think the most, the most important one for us to know is obviously what, what the council's thoughts are on terms of the timing for implementation, whether you want to do the, I think somebody called it the pink slip method, or do it after 2024, or just do it through attrition. So with that, I'll submit any questions this council has.
Okay. We have one caller on this item. Let's, let's hear from the caller and then I think we can have our discussion. Let's give this person an opportunity. I know it's Mr. Milano who has called in.
Yes. Herbert Milano is our caller. Herbert, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Mayor Kostakian, members of the City Council. I believe that during the 20 years that I've been active with the City of Glendale, that I've attended, nearly all of the committees, and often that's as a member as well. And as you're looking towards these two issues concerning the selection and tenure, I suggest and I invite the City Council to look at this in a much broader way, that how many commissions do we need? How many are truly essential? How many need to be expanded in terms of the number of meetings? What is the training that you need to give these commission members? How do you do the selection? Because I can tell you from, from a personal experience, of many committees that where the members don't attend, or become unprepared, or sometimes did work around the Brown Act violation, and still, despite complaints, never got removed. So there are some serious problems, but my concern is, and so maybe there's a different way of approaching this. Let me give you an example. The audit committee only meets four times a year, and it's probably one of the most essential and important committees there, and the level of qualifications needs to be very high. And we have a fairly large CPA community in Glendale. So I find that why is it that we can't seem to get sufficient number of people who want to participate? I would imagine that any CPA would be eager to participate. And so how this election should be done, especially when it's something technical for which the council members themselves may not have the full appreciation or expert, expert knowledge. So there might be another way of doing it. Maybe suggesting to the state auditor to help in the process of selection for all the applicants. So leave completely an arms-length approach to this, and they are selecting individuals who they, in their esteem, you know, are worthy of consideration. My suggestion is that you take a look at all of the commissions and understand which are really the most essential ones that need to be improved on, and what qualifications they really need to make sure that you get the best possible candidates and what kind of training they need. This opportunity, say, doesn't come very often. I suggest to the City Council that you really take a look at this process, you know, completely, and see how else we can improve the process of governance. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And no one else?
No one else.
All right. Who would like to comment on this? If no one has any comments, I can get it kicked off.
Why don't you do that?
Sure. So I think a number of issues necessitated this conversation to have. One, obviously, one of them was a discussion about term limits. Prior councils had instituted a complete blackout, or I think at what's at times referred to as a death clause, that once you're done with your terms, you can no longer serve in any other capacity on another board or commission, and the city attorney is nodding in agreement. And I can tell you that I, for one, am not for having a complete blackout on someone who has served the term limits on one commission, but may have another skill set that could be a benefit to the city in another area. I think that, you know, we invest a lot of time, and we require a lot from our volunteers in our community who learn about meeting proceedings, Robert's Rules of Order, the Brown Act, and a number of other city guidelines. And then once they're done, we have to go through the whole process of retraining them, which we should, so we can churn and have some new blood, but not have such a cloistered system that we ban them from any other types of service that they could render to the city on another body. So that's my thought on the term limits. But in terms of the, the panel process, I think just outlined on how the panels are listed and how they would have been selected and how they were done at one time, I think that worked out just well. I think it's important for us to have these discussions with individuals who are interested in serving the city, have them come before council members, answer questions, feel out and get an insight into what their areas of interest and expertise are, and then refer them to our colleagues for full council approval. And it also allows for us, when, you know, sure, we get to work together in various capacities, but this would add another layer of cooperation and interaction amongst us in a different way that we don't always have on items of the boards and commissions and issues, that allows us to see what each of us has in terms of opinions and desires in, in a particular policy area. So I like, obviously, the idea of bringing back the panel system. I think it's for, fairer, more equitable. It removes kind of this notion of the political plums of appointments out of the whole process and de-politicizes it. As far as how it would be, I've offered to have my own appointments be the first ones to have to adhere to this. So I'm fine with having it go into effect after the 2024 election. But I would urge my colleagues to also consider some of the points that I've raised and consider changing the process into one that would allow for more. And I think that there have been some good points made about how we generally, you know, I don't know if we have a standardized training that we do for all board members or commissioners. I have to be honest, I'm, I'm not familiar with what the processes that they go through, but I would like to see something a little bit more robust and also have a set of expectations, have them sign contract of expected conduct and attendance, and then hold our commissioners and board members to those standards that everyone, that apply to everyone across the board. So those are my thoughts on it. I'm open to hearing from my colleagues. Who would like to go next? Sure. Councilmember Asadrian?
So I'm in agreement with the panel system. I'd like for us to consider the after 2024 as the implementation period. I think bringing it down to two terms per commission, but allowing people to serve across commissions would work well. I know people have certain skill sets. I do want to give new people opportunities to serve. We're a city of 200,000 people, and, you know, having people serve three terms and then another commission and another commission and another commission, I, I think it would be worthwhile to bring it down to two and, but allow them to serve across. Mr. Garcia, I think you mentioned that, for example, for the Civil Service Commission, if there's two, then it would be the same panel that interviews?
Correct.
Okay, so I would not be okay with that. I would want to see a different panel for each of the members, because I think that brings in the diversity of opinions from council members. And each council member gets an opportunity to have a voice in the, in that.
Can I ask, Councilmember Asadrian, is that just for civil service, or?
No, just across, across the board.
Across the board, okay.
So, you know, it, it wouldn't be the case that, you know, two council members get to decide on more than one for each of those panels. So it would just rotate, so we would follow the rotation. So it would just rotate, so we would follow the rotation. I still have questions about the civil service, because I think Councilmember Botman had asked at the beginning of the term what the rotation looks like. And I think the clerk's office was running numbers. I don't know if we ever got that.
I think we provided in one of the prior reports, I can send it off to the council again. And that's, if you're going to do, so that's, if you're going to do the individual nominations, we would have to, and we would have to do it. And then what I had pointed out previously was there are two different ways to view how that works. If you say it follows the council member then appointed that person, or their predecessor, or successor, I should say, then it would be one, it would be a slightly different rule than if you just followed it based on who's vacant, who was the last person that appointed somebody to that position. And that was why I suggested maybe for civil service, you go to the panel. That way, you're addressing that issue and, and, what's the saying, two birds with one stone. So that's, that's an option. But I have that information, and I think we provided in a prior report.
I think that's all I have for now.
Go ahead, Councilmember Botman.
So I don't know that there's necessarily a, a perfect way to do this, so I'm, I'm, and I don't have any experience with the panel method, but I'm, I'm okay with giving that a try. On, and, and I'm, I'm indifferent on the, on the point of whether one panel can appoint, or not, or recommend more than one commissioner. It does make sense if you've got two vacancies to go through, you know, you're going to go through all the interviews, what you said, I think it just makes sense to do two. Not a majority, but, but two potentially if there are two open seats. So I, I'd be okay with that. As far as the transition, one thought I had is maybe allow all of us to kind of fill our positions, you know, give us three months or something like that, fill, fill all of our positions. And then at that point, any, any future vacancies that occur through attrition, then we'll, we'll institute the panel system. That way, I don't know, I think you still, Councilmember Najarian, still have some decisions to make. I do, because there may be some people termed out, you do. So maybe if, and you do, so maybe if we have three months for all of us to get all of our people appointed, we, we, we fill it up, and then from that point on, if there's any, any attrition, that would be one suggestion, just put it out there. But the 2024 thing, I, I'd be okay with that, too. And then on term limits, I think I'm, I'm agreeing with what I've heard, you know, two terms per commission, somebody could serve on multiple commissions potentially. And I would like to just leave the opportunity for council to override if council decides that, you know, there is somebody that we, we really want to keep on. Maybe we won't want to do that, but at least we have the option. And, and then just, so that's on the, I think I've covered all the, like, the, the concrete points. But more broadly speaking, one of the things that I've been thinking is, you know, what, what are these commissions for? Like, what are we really, what's the purpose of these commissions? And to me, I started off thinking of these commissions as being advisory, so I was thinking, we really want experts. I've heard, and I've, and I've kind of seen through, through the process, that it also is a good opportunity for developing leaders, developing future leaders. And sometimes we want to bring on a young person, or somebody that has promise, and give them experience, learning how to participate in, in city affairs. So I think, I don't know, I'm, I'm kind of thinking it's a little bit of both. But I'm struggling because, you know, expertise is important. And there's some commissions where expertise is very important, like Design Review Board, Historic Preservation Commission, Audit Commission, of course, you know. There, there GWP, where, you know, you do want people that have some, some knowledge in that area. Otherwise, you know, what kind of advisory role can they really play if they don't know more than we do about something? So I would like us to consider, you know, having, having that, some kind of, you know, focus on getting people that do have, at least a certain number of people in each commission that do have subject matter expertise. Now, maybe that'll just come out of the panel work that we do, but I just thought I'd mention it.
Okay. By the way, on the attrition, so one of the questions I have is, would that then allow, when we say attrition, you mean when, so for instance, someone is on a board or a commission now, they're maybe three years into a four-year term. Once that term is up, they may not be termed out, but does that person then undergo the new panel interview process?
That's what I was thinking. It doesn't, we don't have to do it that way, but let's say somebody, I think I had somebody who moved out, out of Glendale and had to step down from a commission. Maybe I didn't, I don't know. But anyway, yeah, yeah. So if that happens, then we go into the panels. And that's just one, one, one approach.
Okay. Who else would like to go? Councilmember Devine?
All right, I, I agree with most of what my colleagues have said. I am in favor of trying the panel option. I would like to see it go, start through attrition as well. And as, as we've just discussed, once we fill our pan, our commissions, then we can start with the panel.
Kind of what Councilmember Botman was suggesting, about three months and then?
Exactly, exactly. Right, right. I agree that I think different panels should be used for different, for all the appointments. In other words, if there are two on civil service, I agree, we should have two panels. Again, two separate panels, thank you. Yes, for each, and, and that goes with the other commissions as well, just so we, so we don't have two council members doing all the appointments. The term limits, I'm, I'm in favor of the two, the two, two terms as a limit, and then.
Is it, sorry to interrupt, per commission?
Yes.
Per commission.
But they can, they can go from commission to commission, yes, yeah. And I'm not so sure about the override. I'm, I'm, I don't know. I, I just think we have, we have people out there that, I think if we want to keep changing our commissions and giving more people a chance, I think that override is, could just keep someone on for practically forever. So I'm, I'm not in favor of that. And I think I also like the policy for complaints and allegations. Question?
No, I, no, I think, I appreciate and understand your concern with the override process. You bring up a really good point. I'm also thinking that there may be some items that some departments are addressing and dealing with that may be very long-term projects that are ongoing. And then over time, the board members and commissioners develop very important knowledge. Sometimes, you know, what we refer to as tribal memory, institutional memory, as to where we've come. If there was at least an opportunity to override, if, if a project is almost near completion, or if it's, let's say, through the planning commission, if it's something like the Verdugo Wash proposed project, right? To then have someone, have that expertise, deprive the city of it simply because they reached the end, whereas we can say, okay, well, this person has invested this much time, we override it and extend their service by another year or two, perhaps putting a cap on what we allow.
Is that the way it works? They would be, we would extend it for a year if they were working on a project?
We could do whatever we, we want technically, right?
Right, I mean, if you have the override, then you could do that. You could say, we give the override, but it's for, I mean, you could put that into the process if you want. But typically, when you do the override, it's for the next term.
Yeah, it's for a full term. And I, I mean, and look.
Again, it's the council's process, so the council can create limit.
And council goes through the same thing. If we, if we're not running, or our term limit is up, and like for the museum, you know, I have to run again in order to maybe see it almost to completion. Or, you know, mayor, you, the same with you, if you want to.
I'm just trying to anticipate any.
We all experience that, where we can't follow our, our projects to fulfillment, to fruition. That's regrettable, but, you know, it's something to.
It's, it won't be a hill I die on. I'm just trying to anticipate issues that may come up that may make life more difficult for staff.
And I would say, if there's a, if there's a case, or if we can put word somehow in there, if there's a, a project that they're working on, or they have been working on for years that we want to extend for one year, you know, I, I would be okay with that. But to extend it for a full term, and then another full term, I mean, as I say, they could go on forever.
Councilmember Southrian?
I agree with Councilmember Devine on the override. I think we have the same rules for our own elections. I don't want it to be a case where all of a sudden, somebody feels like they're, you know, another person's being favored over somebody else that's on, on the commission. As it pertains to the qualifications for the subject matter that Councilmember Botman brought up, I like the qualifications that are listed now. Neither one of us here have a lot of the expertise on issues that we vote on. We rely on staff to make those decisions, and I think that rules that we have for ourselves should be also applied to commissioners. So I think there are some standards in place already for that technical knowledge to be on the commission. I for one, when I think about my Design Review Board appointment, I purposely didn't put an architect or a contractor on that commission, because I wanted somebody that had the viewpoint of a community member on that commission, somebody that can read and understand codes. But also, you know, on the flip side of that, I also thought that architects bring their own likes and dislikes to projects. And that commission is really made to evaluate whether a project is up to code or not. So I like the qualifications we have. I, I wouldn't want to add additional on them. I am still keen on the 2024 versus through attrition.
Mr. Mayor, if I may interject, on, on that note that Councilmembers Botman and Southrian were talking about, Mr. Garcia, yesterday or today, sent out an email that was within attachment regarding the qualification and expertise requirements. There are six commissions that currently do have that requirement, and six that don't. So if, if you wanted to go through that, I'm pretty sure Mr. Garcia can cover it, and if you want to make any adjustments thereon.
My, my sense is that I think through the panel, and through the interview process, and having this exercise, we're going to be able to attract people who have more applicable experience and pertinent qualifications. I'm, and I, I think leaving the ones that have those requirements now is fine. I don't know if we necessarily need to, but I'm fine with exploring that. I would like us to kind of figure out where we're headed with this generally, and I'm getting, I think we're inching towards some sort of consensus, but we have, I don't believe we've heard yet from Councilmember Najarian, and I would like to hear from him as well, having been one of the longer-serving members of this body.
Right. Thank you. So I went through the process of the two interviewee panel back when I first was trying to get involved with the city. I thought it worked pretty well, except the first time when they declined to appoint me. The second time worked, I think they made the right decision. And that's the way we used to do it, until we got complaints from Councilmember John Drayman, who was not happy that due to the rotation of the panels, he was not able to have input in selecting a commissioner on, I think it was Design Review Board, I'm not sure. So he urged council to go to the one council member, one commissioner appointment process. And so, listen, what I want are balanced, unbiased commissioners. I don't want commissioners who are zealots in any area, and I see zealots on current commissions. I see very disappointing behavior from commissioners. Some, my own, I'm not pointing the finger at anybody. I'm hoping that a two-member panel can help cut back on some of that. Two eyes perhaps can see flaws in a candidate that one set of eyes do not see. I think that's very important, especially since many of these commissions are acting in quasi-judicial roles. I don't want to get into that again. But they really have to be unbiased. They have to have an open mind in many of these hearings, and in the regular commission work. They can't be so entrenched in one particular point of view. A builder. I don't want a builder on there who says, build anything, as long as the engineering supports it, build, build, build. I don't want that. But on the other hand, I don't want someone that says, no, no more building, you're ruining the character of everything in this city that's holy and wonderful. I want someone in the middle that sees both sides, that isn't connected. It's not a card-carrying member of the do-not-build-in-Glendale Club, or conversely, who's a member of the I-build-it, you know, you pay me, I build it club. I want someone in the middle. We need to avoid those extremes. And that's where this city gets into trouble, I think, where we've got extremists on commissions, on whatever side it may be. So I'm hoping that this two-panel interview process works. With regard to overriding and giving people extra terms, I might support that if it's a unanimous vote by council. That way, because this person has presumably spent two terms, eight years, on a commission, hopefully his work is admirable. And if that's the case, let's all agree to, to have that person go on. So I would, I would see that perhaps as a little bit of a safeguard, as opposed to, you know, just what would otherwise be a majority vote towards having someone on there. Let's have a different panel for each opening that occurs. Let's pay attention to some of the professional requirements, experience requirements, that planning, I think DRB, that list that the city attorney just gave, audit. I didn't realize audit has some pretty strict requirements that I'm, I'm pretty sure we're not, we're not following. They have to be a high-level.
So relevant experience serving as a corporate officer, auditor, attorney, or professional consultant to business, government, or organization.
So that's a pretty high, and that's not just someone who's interested in keeping an eye on city finances. This is someone with, with a valuable experience. And that's just an example. I know transportation and parking, three or four of the positions have a, a certain requirement. So if we pay attention to that, keep that on, and that's in our charter? Or is that in our?
Municipal code.
Municipal code. And, you know, let's go. I mean, it worked before. I think the two-panel thing works, but I think we need to, we need to bring the, the commissions back to a sense of balance, where you look at a commissioner and say, would that person be a good judge? Not, would that person be a good advocate for X, Y, or Z? I think that's the important thing that we need to do. I'm okay with term limits, with the unanimous override for an additional term.
Additional full term, or?
I'd say additional for full term. It's kind of hard to say, only for this particular subject, only till the bike lanes are put in Glendale, let's say. You know, because that could be, could go on a long time. That's just my opinion, I'm not.
Well, again, my, my only concern with the override, being, having council, giving councils authority to maintain that is, and if it's something staff needs, then I'm, that's my consideration. But only, I'm, I'm trying to go through the mental exercise of appointing the panel, putting a timeline on when someone's appointed. In between that, we all know of situations where there's, you know, hearings, and, and it gets canceled because they don't have quorum, or whatever else it may be. There's either an applicant waiting for, to have their, you know, moment before the body, et cetera. I don't want to hold things up because of the process. If there's someone already, and I don't know if this would allow it currently, if a new appointment hasn't been made yet, the person just continues to serve through, right?
They're supposed to be reappointed after the, the term, when the term of the council member is up, they're supposed to be reappointed, and then, but if they, they continue to serve, at some point, that, that continued service counts as a full term. So that's kind of how the rule is currently written.
That's my main concern. I mean, I don't want to let perfect to be the enemy of good, or good enough, because I think we're making some significant progress here. I think we're making some significant progress here, but that is my consideration, not because I have anyone in particular in mind, or I want to extend anyone's service, or give them second bites at the apple.
Wait, 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 I'm not finished yet. The last is the removal process, and I think we need to work on that and make it a much smoother process. I've had discussions over the years with three of my commissioners, and I've told them that their actions, their behavior, and their decisions were unacceptable, and it's sort of, I mean, that's kind of where it ended. I think if there's more of a holistic approach towards addressing these issues with a particular commissioner, that we could reform them in some degree, and other times, no reform is possible, in which case they need to be removed. So I'd like it if we tightened up our procedure for that issue. Maybe it involves the mayor and another council member, the mayor and the city manager and city attorney, speaking to that person, saying, "What you did was wrong, unacceptable, the way you speak to staff, et cetera, et cetera. There've been some doozies in the last four months." And we just need to let them know, "Not good, bad commissioner. Shape up or..."
Ship out.
Ship out, or we'll ship you out. Hopefully, in that, hopefully, in that context, they would be very encouraged to change their behavior and performance on the commission. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Devine.
I just want to comment that I agree with everything, all of Councilmember Najarian's suggestions, except for the unanimous vote by council for the override, because I think that's putting us right back where we are now. When one council member nominates someone, who's going to say no? And why do we not say no? So I would disagree with that, and I'm going to really hope that we do not reinstitute the override.
But you support an additional term, past term limits?
Yes.
Based on, it would be a majority vote, then?
No, wait, say that again?
No, no, she's not, she's not for the override.
She's not for the override.
No, I'm not for the override. I'm not for the.
No extension on a term?
No extension.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, right, right, right. Because, because you're saying that in order to do that for the override, you would want a unanimous vote by council.
That commissioner would have to be so good that we all support.
But it's still, but it still puts us back to where we are right now, when, let's say I nominate a commissioner, and somebody's going, you know, "They're really not, they shouldn't be on there," but I don't want to make, you know, I don't want to upset.
I think all your nominees have been fantastic, Councilmember Najarian.
They have been, they have been, but, you know, others maybe not so good. But do you get my point, Councilmember Najarian, on the unanimous?
Happy to consider that.
So I think that we can maybe break this up and take some votes and actions.
I think I heard consensus on most of it, except for the issue of the override.
Can you synthesize that for us, Councilmember Asatiran? What is your comment?
For the implementation and timing? Do we have consensus?
No, we don't. There's attrition, and then there's 2024, but it sounds like attrition is.
Well, I thought I heard three months for the councilmembers to fill any vacancies that they, making nominations that they have. At that point, we go through attrition, we go by attrition.
Attrition or 2024? Attrition in the sense I have someone who resigns, someone leaves, and we implement this, otherwise, starting in 2024. We definitely would, because those would be the end of terms.
Those would be new terms, correct?
I'm leaning to 2024.
Across the board.
Yeah, so, I mean, we talked about this during the last meeting, that we would just start with 2024.
But this is, this would be similar. There's nothing to preclude this, except everyone would get to make the remainder of their appointments over the next three months. By then, if, so people have not made their appointments, there's other issues at work here. Past that, if you allowed the three months to lapse, and you still have, there is still an opening on a board or commission, then it has to go through this process. So no one's ability to appoint their board members or commissioners is being taken away. It's just the three months within which it has to be done. Is that clear? Is that, am I correct on that?
That's how I heard it from.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Some of it's termed out, but I have two, maybe three, that are termed out.
Correct.
Are they available, eligible to serve the rest to 2024?
For you, no, because they've, they're termed out, so they have, they have to be replaced, and they can't be appointed unless the council changes the rule, which doesn't sound like you.
So it could be a short-term appointment, right? It could be a one-year appointment.
Right.
If we appoint someone.
If you did that, and you said, "We're not going to do it till 2024," but what I heard was, well, there's some support for just doing it so that councilmembers make their nominations for the next three months, and that point, any future appointments will be done through the panel process.
Okay, so the process starts in 2024. It's not that we cleared a slate.
Right.
And do that. Okay.
Right. Although, wait, I heard.
The process, the process would go into effect almost immediately, well, in three months.
In three months, as soon as we make all of our appointments.
I heard from Councilman Brotman and Devine and the mayor, support for three months to make, for councilmembers to make any nominations for their pending vacancies.
Right.
At that point, any future, any existing vacancies or any future vacancies that occur either through removal or resignation would be appointed through the panel process.
Mr. Mayor, may I suggest that City Attorney Garcia read off all the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven line items that he believes?
There's only a couple, I think. That was the one that, maybe consensus was the right word. There was, there was, there was a consensus, I think I heard the consensus, though, on that the panel will only fill one vacancy at a time, not per commission. I heard support for returning to two terms per board or commission, and then there was still obviously some debate on whether or not to reinstitute the council override. The other part, we would institute a process for complaints and allegations and removal. We would follow the other processes in the prior resolution. So those were the issues, I think, that there was some issue of either consensus or some support for in a certain direction.
So for the term limits, it's only term limits per commission?
Two terms per commission.
Okay, so a person could technically bounce around, just so we're clear on that. That's, I'm fine with that.
Serve on three, three commissions, right?
Yeah, potentially.
So I have, I know at least one commissioner that if this goes into effect, they would be termed out. And would that mean that within the next three months, I would have to appoint a new person to that body in order for me to have that appointment for the commission?
At the point, we amend the code, because right now, it doesn't apply, because right now, it's three terms.
Because the minute this kicks in, then they would be removed.
Another option for the council is to grandfather the term limits for the two, because we used to have three terms, and now we're going back to two, but per commission. The council can say the two term starts now, or starts, you know, you don't count the term that they're currently in. Those are some options we can bring back to you when we bring back the resolution. Or you can just say two terms. If you serve two terms, you know, you can't serve anymore on that commission, and you'll have to, that person can be pointed to a separate commission, and then the council members would have to find a new, a new commissioner for, for somebody on that commission.
I mean, here was what I would say. That's, this is one of the reasons why the attrition one, I could go either way. I'm fine with all of this just going into effect, starting in 2024.
I just think it's cleaner for us to do it that way.
I'm fine with that, but if folks feel very strongly about through attrition, we could do it through attrition as well.
I think I know what councilmembers, Devine and Brotman, or Councilmember Najarian. Yeah, I know you're.
I, I mean, either way, it's fine with me.
So if we were to have it instituted?
Not on that hill either.
So we did it on 2024. Would that allow the individuals who are currently serving, would we still have to institute something that says it's, the two terms don't apply to the individuals who are in their third terms now? What would you need us to say in order to allow that?
You would need to provide me direct.
For this to be implemented as cleanly as possible.
Right, so what I would recommend is for you to direct me to prepare an ordinance to address the term limits, and in doing so, I will give you a couple of options, how to treat the commissioners that have already exceeded the two terms. One option would be they get grandfathered at some certain level, or it would just take effect for all of their terms going back in time, and that would be the policy call for the council. I'd like to draft up the language so you can see and see how it would work.
And then what happens to civil service with the two that are coming up?
So again, my recommendation for civil service is to go ahead and start the panel process for civil service immediately, once we, once we bring back the resolution. Everything, everything else will not take effect until 2024.
Then that comes back through attrition, which I'm also fine with. I could, I could be fine with attrition.
Okay.
Three months and then attrition.
Yeah, yeah.
That's.
Three months to appoint whoever you need to appoint, and then we have attrition.
Correct.
Which triggers the new panel system.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, so the item would be that, three months to appoint, and then followed by appointment through the panel process. You would go back to two terms per commission, and then there would be one panel per vacancy, and the only other item, again, is the council override. There's not, there hasn't been a resolution of that. Do you want to leave that out for now, and then we'll?
I think we can, unless there's.
You want to leave it out?
Leave it out.
Okay.
Are we going to come back to it later?
No override.
I'm not for overrides.
No, I'm not either.
Okay, it doesn't look like there's a support for an override.
That's it.
That's it.
Two terms, okay. That's fine.
If I can get a motion with those items, and then.
I can make a motion. I think I got, I think I got it.
So moved.
Let me, let me.
I just say, yeah.
Say so moved.
Or do you want to run through?
If you feel like, yeah.
This is what I got. We want to go to a panel system. We want one commissioner per panel.
One panel per commissioner.
One panel.
One panel per commissioner. The term limit, two terms per commission, no override, the policy for complaints that you discussed, and then three months to fill our positions, and then at that point, just base it on attrition. But immediate, immediate implementation for civil service.
And this will come back for us to adopt in clear language. In that, can you also add, City Attorney Garcia, how to address partial terms? What that, how that would be applicable to someone if they're serving less than four years, less than three years, less than two years?
We'll do.
Fill a vacancy.
The motion missed the part that it's two terms, but can serve on different commissions, so.
No, he said two terms per commission.
Two terms per commission.
Per commission, oh, okay, 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 okay.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
All right, and we have roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmembers Asatiran?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian?
Yes, thank you. Can we have the third item on this afternoon meeting read into the record?
Yes. The third item is City Manager Regarding Youth Commissioners Report, a motion directing staff.
All right. Mr. Valanian?
Mr. Mayor, my city council, Councilmember Satyam had requested information on adding youth seats to certain boards and commissions that we just talked about, and since these boards and commissions been established by ordinance and codified in our municipal code, if council directs staff, we'll have to draft amendments to the ordinances in adding these non-voting youth seats and bring it back to, for council's consideration for introduction and adoption. With that, I'll turn it over to Greg Castro, our Innovation Project Manager, to present the item for your consideration.
Good afternoon, Mayor Kasakian, City Council. My name is Greg Caio. I'm an Innovation Project Manager, Office of Innovation and Performance, and I work in the Management Services Department. Today, I'm going to talk to you about youth commissioners. So some background, Councilmember Asatiran brought up initially interest in including the voices of youth in the decision-making processes in Glendale Boards and Commissions, specifically Parks and Arts and Culture, and Councilmember Brotman was interested also in adding that to transportation and parking. So before I go any further, I wanted to answer, what is a youth seat? So a youth seat on a board and commission is essentially a non-voting seat that's reserved for students, usually middle school to college-age students, that allows them to provide their perspective and also get some experience while they're on a board and commission. Currently, two of our boards and commissions require youth seats. That is the Commission on the Status of Women and the Sustainability Commission, each of which have two dedicated seats. The Arts and Culture Commission has a strong requirement for a youth seat, and it's currently filled right now by a youth, but it is not mandatory like the other two. So commission compositions are determined by the Glendale Municipal Code. There's usually a specific section called composition. I have an example here for the Commission on the Status of Women, and you can see here, it says the commission will be composed of five voting members and two students who shall be ex officio non-voting members. So to add youth seats to existing commissions, it's pretty straightforward. We would just draft an ordinance that amends the existing ordinance that made the commission composition that you saw before. So if we were to go forward with the current recommendations, we would be adding youth seats to the following, the Arts and Culture Commission, Parks, Recreation and Community Services Commission, and the Transportation and Parking Commission. We recommend considering criteria like relevance of the scope of the commission, if it can give representation to youth, if it can provide developmental opportunities for youth, if it adds to the equity and inclusion of a board and commission, and any other reasons that council can come up with and would like to include. One final note is that certain meeting times are currently not compatible with particularly middle school to high school age students. So the Parks and Rec Commission currently meets on the third Monday of every month at 2:30 PM, so that would be probably prohibitive for a high school student or a middle school student to meet. The Arts and Culture Commission meets Tuesday at every month, starting at 2:00 PM. Again, that would also be difficult. Transportation and Parking meets the fourth Monday after 6:00. That's a much better time. I would say any, in the research, we found any time after 6:00 would be preferable for students. So our recommendation today is for council to provide staff with direction as to if any boards or commissions should be amended to include non-voting youth seats. That is all, thank you.
Hey, Councilmember Devine.
Thank you. First of all, do you have an age range? You mentioned middle school, and that's kind of a little young, so I'm just thinking, do you have an age range, like for the Commission on the Status of Women, I believe it's 17 and above, 16 and above, I can't remember.
Yes, so I think currently, we define it as students generally, so it's fairly vague. We looked at other cities, and some of them do define it by age. So Los Angeles goes as young as 14 years of age and no older than 17. Long Beach is under the age of 19 at appointment. The Burbank Youth Board is seventh grade to 20 years of age at the time of appointment.
And what is our Commission on the Status of Women?
I believe, so I have the exact language. I just said, I think it says student, so it's fairly vague.
We usually had high school students and college students.
Yeah, it just says student, so there's no age requirement currently, I believe, on the, in the language within the ordinance.
Yeah, I kind of like to see some sort of a parameter there. And you, solving the meeting times, did you say the Arts and Culture, you'd have to move to 6:00 PM?
I would recommend after 6:00 PM, but that would be up to the commission, and I think that would be done at the commission level.
Okay, these are decisions, okay. All right, you know, I'm all for this. I've worked with ex officios, and they're fabulous. It gives them a great insight into local government, and it builds confidence, it builds their ability to speak in front of the camera and an audience. It teaches them professionalism, and it's just a really great experience for them. So I'm absolutely in favor of this, all three of them.
Councilmember Asatiran?
I obviously support this. I'm actually excited for it. I do want to note something about the age requirement, and why would I want to touch that? I remember when I first launched the NCA Glendale Internship Program, I had initially put down a requirement that you had to be 17 and older, and Councilmember Devine, you actually know her as a former official, but a young woman by name of Talar Malakian showed up to the office and said, "I know I don't meet your age requirement, but I know I can do this internship, and probably better than other folks that may be applying." So I remember giving her an assignment on the spot to write a press release, which was probably what I thought would be like over, going over her head, and she probably wrote a better press release than I've seen staffers write, and so she was the reason that I got rid of the age requirement back then for that internship program, and I think that if the student thinks that they can gain something. And I think that if the student thinks that they can gain something out of this, then, and, and have the input that we're looking for, then I don't see an issue with someone being 15. I know that just recently, some of the students that have volunteered with me are like 14, 15 years old, and they're just extremely bright and knowledgeable, and I would love to have, have them and see them on, on these bodies, so I support that. And then, with respect to the timing, I think I don't want to mess with the schedules for what works for the commissions, and so I would leave that to the staff of each department to decide, and, you know, if, if they decide that they're keeping the same schedule, then the individuals that apply have to have, have that opportunity to be able to serve during that time. Those are my comments.
Councilmember Najarian, and by the way, do we have any callers or cards on this? Okay, we can go ahead.
We're going to have to shorten their term of service, right? Isn't four years would be a little too long in the, in the lifespan? Did you address that?
Yeah, I don't think the, yeah, I think it was a shorter term. I would have to get back to you on the exact length that is not addressed in the composition sections.
Okay, so, I mean, one year makes, makes sense to me. I presume they would be selected in the same dual panel process that we just discussed, and I'm okay with those three. Why does Commission on the Status of Women have two?
I'm not sure.
Just always did.
So does Sustainability.
Do we want to reduce that to one, maybe? I mean, to be consistent.
Mr. Mayor, the Sustainability Commission has also two.
I may have a suggestion for the two and how we can address that, but councilmember Brotman?
I was just going to say, yes, Sustainability, I know, has two. They selected the two. It didn't, it didn't come to us, so it's at the commission level. They didn't have any kind of panel system. They just, I guess, had people apply and come and speak to them, and they voted.
And, and they did sort of conducted interviews, asked questions as well.
At, at the, at the meeting, in, in the open.
Was that authorized?
And our research, in the, the cities of Burbank and Long Beach have some youth seats on their Sustainability Commission and Commission on Youth and Families. Each of those has two members, so I'm not sure where the number two comes from, but it's, it seems like a standard.
Our legal counsel, Ms. Van Miden.
Sure.
If you'd like to address this.
I'm members of the council, Mayor Kasakian. I sit for the Sustainability Commission meeting. What they did is they appointed an ad hoc committee of two members of the commission to review resumes and then make recommendations to the full commission. They're looking for members that are, both have qualifications from a high school level and also from, potentially from a community college level or college level, so that's what you see represented on, on that, the two student ex officios.
Thank you. That's, that's actually, so the suggestion I was going to make is that if we have...
Is that their own rule, or did we approve that?
I, I am not sure, but it may have been a rule. I can't recall far back enough to know what happened with the Commission on the Status of Women. However, what I want to say is, do you have a cap on the age or no? What is considered youth nowadays?
So we don't currently. I would almost recommend doing that, because saying student, you know, a student in a community college could be any age.
Well, for that reason, I was actually going to say, if we don't have a cap, the only thing I really care about is, there's two items here. One is, our board members and commissioners generally, I think, except for audit, are required to live in Glendale. Given how many students come into our district who kind of, you know, use our parks, use our facilities, are part of the community, but may not live in Glendale, we need to address the issue whether we expect these commissioners, two youth commissioners, to be residents. For me, that's not a big deal. For them being part of our youth community is more important, and I think that community college students see things differently than high school students do. And so I would like to see that, us to expand it to potentially also include community college students, whatever their age is, or if we're going to put an age cap on what we consider youths, and then leave it at that, to have that perspective as well. And if we have community college students, that may address also the issue of timing of meetings and their flexibility. Community college students may tend to have more of the means and ability to attend meetings that are in the afternoon that students who are at a traditional high school track may not be able to. So those are my thoughts and comments. Anyone like to comment on this, so we can come to some sort of conclusion?
If I could just finish up, I support it. I, I, I believe in, you know, letting the commissions, as much as possible, figure out their own way of selecting the, the students. Age doesn't really matter that much to me, but, you know, you could say, you could put 21 on there, that's generally going to cover your, your community college students as a max, you know, and minimum, I don't know, it doesn't really matter to me.
Yeah.
And that's it. I think, I think it's a great thing.
Yeah. But in, in, in the event where there are two spots, my preference would be to have one from the high school level and one from the college.
And I think, is that what the Sustainability Commission did? They did that, right? Yeah. So we can make that as a suggestion.
That's what the commission, that's what the commission did, too. We had high school and college.
Well, let's not make it a hard rule, because what if we can't get a high school student because of the time? So maybe we can make it as a suggestion to the commission to do that.
I prefer they be Glendale residents. You're saying that it's someone that...
Right.
Let's say participates in the softball league or whatever.
Okay.
No, they had to be. On the Commission on the Status of Women, they had to be Glendale residents.
I prefer residents.
Yeah, and because they went to our schools.
One of the things I'm thinking about is some of the private schools that we have, and so would that make a difference if we...
Schools, schools.
Right. It's, no, no, but if, if they don't live in Glendale, but they go to a school in Glendale, they should still be able to...
That's what councilmember Najarian is saying, no, it should be residents. Again, it's not, it's not a hard, fast rule, then in that case, we should include that, because it may be misleading if someone sees it advertised on campus, and they want to apply, should clearly state must be a resident of Glendale.
Yeah. We could get Pasadena here and...
Okay.
So are we, are we putting in, so, I don't know why I know this, but the age factors, you're a child up to 18, and then the universal number for youth is, it caps at 25. So unless, so if we go with youth, then it's 25. If we want to cap it at a lower number, then we should be saying that today.
I would rather have less restriction than more, and leave it to the commissions, but 25 would be fine also. I guess you have some community college students that, you know, they're on the long program.
Okay. So if no one has strong objection to that, no limit on the low end, on the top end, 25, then we can also, and everyone's okay with the recommendations of the specific commission and boards that were brought forth. So that's transportation, parks, and...
Arts and culture.
Arts and culture. Okay.
And a recommendation, where possible, to have one be a community college student, the other be a high school student?
Where, yeah, where it's...
And a resident requirement is...
And a resident requirement.
Right.
Okay.
So it's two on each one of those?
Yeah.
I think, I think we leave...
You're saying two on the existing, on sustainability and status.
Honestly, I'm, I would say that leave it up to the commission to decide, or that body, and what works for them. I'm, I don't necessarily want to see for everything to have that proliferation, but some of them, if like, the Sustainability one and the Commission on the Status of Women feels that they need both perspectives, then that makes sense. I will tell you that on the college, on, on transportation, a college student may have more to say about transportation issues than a student and at the high school level. So I, again, I would defer to the specific body to decide what works for them. They can have one, or they can have two.
Up to two.
Up to two.
On the item?
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.